To the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Public discussion. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda in minutes dated March 11th, 2025.
I'll do that.
We have a motion by Hawes and a second by Garmen. Any discussion on the agenda in minutes? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. Okay, next we have the discussion decision to review and approve claims, conservation claims. Has everyone had a chance to review them? Do you want a minute to go through that? Whenever someone's ready, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve claims.
Okay, we have a motion by Stecker to approve the claims.
I'll second.
We have a second by Whacter. Any discussion on the claims? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimous. And next we have acknowledged budget status report. Has everyone reviewed that? Where we're sitting. Tammy, any thing you need to point out? Okay. Thanks for doing that. We will let the record reflect that we acknowledge them. Monthly update from Veterans Affairs. Good morning, Dan.
Good morning. Well, hopefully you all got your packets. I found out last week here. Couple of things for the month of February, the metrics. I have 39 phone calls, 42 messages, 22 walk-ins, 26 appointments. We did one veteran transport. We've submitted 104 VA forms to VA for various actions on claims. I'm currently tracking 1,248 records in the system. Keeping in mind, it's also included those that have passed. So the actual active records concerning investment would be about 850 to 900 at this time. I've currently got 34 claims in the system, nine that are waiting decision. I'm working on 19 under development. I have one supplemental claim in appeals. I am registered for our state association conference in April down in Des Moines. That'll be 14th of April through the 18th. Waiting for the registration window to open up at Nationals in Kentucky this year. That'll be sometime in June or July. I'll have to take a look at that date for sure. Found out last night, they invited a guest speaker, Jessica Lynch, for the national conference. It'll be interesting. I'll forget to meet her on that endeavor. Pending the advanced appeals training at Agnes Hall, haven't seen any 2025 training dates for that yet, so I'm still looking at that. The mobile medical unit was here earlier this month. We had four vets plus one walking. And we got them scheduled to be here next month on April 7th. Current claims year-to-date for the month, and this is again for February, was $8,727.05. And then we have a little over $22,000 in retroactive benefits that were awarded. The ad hoc amounts, you can see right there. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those for you. Still working on my food plant for emergency management. I'm a little farther along. It's got some time Friday digging in on that. One of the things that I'm looking at on the actual worksheet overview is I can see that talks about the risk portion, and that's on page two, so that's how far I got with that. And then the worksheet for emergency ops would be the bare bones minimum type of equipment that I would need if we were going through this place. So working on that as well. Also trying to recontact Mr. Maury on the preservation of the grave records, trying to get a quote for those to work, so those can be digitized. Have not been able to reach him yet. Currently, we have seven applications for consideration to fill the commissioner position. My commissioners, due to scheduling, could not meet last Thursday. So hopefully, weather dependent, we'll be able to meet this Thursday. Plan B will be maybe next Thursday if that doesn't work out, so. But seven applications, I'm really pleased with that. And then lastly, on March 13th, as maybe some of the vets here in the county may be aware of, the second brigade combat team, 34th Infantry Division, will be mobilizing later this year in support of Operation Inherent Resolve. And currently, what that involves is campaigns in Iraq, Libya, and Syria against the Islamic State. So when this takes place, the brigade will take about 6,000 soldiers to the joint readiness training in Fort Hope, Louisiana, for their overall mobilization training and preparedness. And then, once that's completed, about half of those soldiers will then go forward into the theater of operations overseas, and the rest will come home. And currently, they're doing town halls on that effect because it will impact the entire state. And they recently did Boone again on March 13th. They're going to be doing Fort Dodge on the 25th of March, Davenport on the 25th of March, Mount Pleasant on the 26th, Dubuque on the 31st, Waterloo will be April 1st, Iowa City April 1st, and then Esterville April 3rd. So if schedule permits, I'm going to maybe try and sit in either at the Fort Dodge one on the 25th, or maybe Esterville on the 3rd of April. Because I'm sure there'll be some veterans that won't be their first time, but according to the brigade commander, there will be a lot of new folks that this will be their first appointment and kind of want to answer any veteran-type questions that they may have at that point. And then, of course, the planned welcome home when they come back within years. So it'll impact a lot of communities across the, across the state. I'm not really sure how, to what extent, Cassuth County is impacted, but, you know, we've got that throughout, so. Subject to your questions, that's all I have for my report. Okay?
All right, thanks. Yep, thanks, Dan. Appreciate it. Okay. Up to discussion for Buffalo Township Urban Renewal TIP options and representation.
Okay, if we can move that to nine o'clock.
Okay.
She is going to call us at nine o'clock.
That's fine.
So if we can skip.
We can wait on that, yep.
That and come back to that.
Okay.
That'll be the next one, too.
We'll move on then to discussion decision regarding commitment to the grandstand project at the Cassuth County Fairgrounds.
Do you want to wait for that one, Amber, until after you talk to them?
I guess the, for having it on there to discuss the grandstand project with the attorneys, my questions are geared more to how it gets paid and how it looks from an audit standpoint. Those are more of what my questions are geared to. My questions aren't geared to, are we going to give money to it? You know, there, it doesn't.
Right, okay.
It's more trying to just figure out
Sure.
the process and, and what's okay.
Okay.
Cause you were.
Get it clear in my mind, I guess.
You were wanting to know how the project in city limits can be paid as rural dollars was your first question last week.
If, that is, yeah, I got my questions here.
Okay. Yeah, but like you say, yep. Different than the.
It isn't necessarily going to affect my vote on what we give for a dollar amount. I just want to make sure that I have all my questions answered as far as using the TIP dollars and how that works, so.
And I did send.
Yep.
Yeah, and my, and yeah, my question is, you know, based on, sorry. You know, how we can have a project in the city limits in our urban renewal area. That's one of my questions. I understand that when we create a TIP, it's like its own entity, so it's its own taxing kind of body. So it, it kind of, I don't want to say it doesn't matter where the taxes come from. It kind of differentiates it from city money, rural dollars. It's tax dollars, you know, it's just. I just want to understand the process of having something in the city limits in our urban renewal area. So I don't care how you guys want to proceed. It, it will not probably change how I vote on a dollar amount
Sure.
because, you know, we did already discuss that at Budget Time.
Yep. Yep.
And.
Well, so.
So it's up to you guys.
Yep.
I'm okay with however you want to do it.
And Elizabeth did respond that she isn't, can't be present this morning. But her response was, it's up to your TIP attorney to help you navigate what is an appropriate expenditure of the TIP dollars and what is legal. From an audit standpoint, we will base our test work on what your attorney has approved and what is included in the urban renewal plan amendment.
Right.
Yes, and I did actually call Elizabeth yesterday as well, and I spoke with her.
Okay.
And I've got some information, you know, as far as just talking with her. Kind of geared me on some of my other questions.
Very good.
It's just how the money is going to be viewed and.
Yep. So as far as the commitment goes in the agenda item, currently our discussed commitment for budget purposes was $50,000 a year for five years in the sum of $250,000. That was kind of our idea, but for this year, our commitment was $50,000 out of the general fund.
First, yeah, first.
So that, that's where we currently stand. And I think the discussion is whether or not that number should change or not. And I guess from what I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, but is the, after going to the meeting with the fair, fair board and the developer and such, and maybe, maybe I guess, you guys are here, but if one of you could speak to this, maybe what.
So one of the things that we really have to strive to get to is 1.3 million, because at 1.3 million dollars, we can apply for grants, the cash grant.
Could, could you come up and just state your name, Joe, or, yeah, sorry?
So one of the things we have to strive to is to get to 1.3 million dollars, because at that point, we can apply for numerous grants and, because you got to raise two-thirds of the money. So if you say that you're just going to give us 50,000, then we, for one year, and then you'll decide later, we can only put 50,000 towards the commitments. If you say, hey, we're going to commit to 250,000 over five or five years, then we can put 250,000 as our commitment to get us to our goal. So that's, that's the importance of having 50 versus 250 on our side of things. It helps us get closer to.
Well, which at Budget Time, we, we put in there to get 50 in there, so you have it right away. The 250 was the total
Yep.
that we talked about.
Yep.
But it was just how that would be allocated.
Yeah.
Just for my own comfort level, I had said I wanted to wait until I literally saw those TIP dollars coming through.
So what you think is three months, a year down the road, or like, how long do you think before you see that?
Before we see the TIP dollars?
Before you'd be able to commit the TIP dollars?
I don't think it, I don't, I don't think our commitment has to be hinged on, on TIP dollars or other dollars. I think our commitment needs to be total dollars that we want to give you. I don't think it's your concern, me.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't.
It's not your concern how we pay.
That's correct.
Your concern is what our total is.
Commitment is, a total commitment.
Exactly.
That's all, we don't care how you, how it gets paid, we just, yes, yes, we're on the same page, yes.
Yeah, and, and my questions for this is geared towards
Yep.
how we're going to pay that commitment. So it's not geared toward whether or not you get money. It's geared towards how that money is given, so.
Which we do have 50 plugged into the budget currently, but we didn't formally act or actually finalize a 250,000 total or anything of that nature. So it was discussed, and I think we were all all this.
We all, yeah, we all talked about a number that we were comfortable with at Budget Time, but then we had to further discuss how that money
Yep.
was allocated, because obviously, if we go through revenue bonds, whatever we go through, that's going to require more conversation on our part. Doesn't necessarily affect you guys, but.
Well, our sharing group is trying to push us to know, like, when the commitment, the 250,000, if that's what you ended up deciding, when that commitment would be pledged to us, so we could move forward with our grants and put it towards our allocation. You know, that's what.
You mean, when you'll have the total amount of that money?
No, no.
Or just the commitment?
Those are commitments.
Well, isn't that why it's on the agenda today?
Yeah, I mean, that discussion is live.
Yeah, so that's, that's.
What are we, what are we committing?
Yeah, what are you committing? Yeah, that's all we care about, because I don't care if you pay it now or five years or something, but we just need to, like, we just wanted to know so we can move forward with what, with what we got to.
Yeah.
So.
And I'm comfortable with making a commitment today, it's just how the money's going to come to you.
Yep.
Because, and like I said.
And for us, we don't care.
That'll be our, that'll be our worry. That's how.
It is, it's a very separate conversation.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Yep, because we have not formally committed anything outside of the 50,000. I mean, in my.
I mean.
We verbally talked about it, but I don't think we've really.
I mean, the 50,000 is part of the budget.
That's what I mean.
We haven't voted on that yet either.
Well, we haven't voted on the budget either, so.
None, none of it is formally committed yet, so.
So.
It's not official until the budget is approved.
Yeah.
But that, you know, for sure, is money that you're going to get right away.
Yeah.
But the rest of it, we have to figure out.
Yeah.
It's, it's going to require work on our part.
Yeah, exactly.
And attorney fees and things like that, because we'll be working with an attorney for
Yeah.
that if it's a revenue bond process, so.
So, Joe, for the commitment aspect of things, if we're talking 250, how close are you to that 1.3? To where is, is that an acceptable amount? I'm not, except, it's not the right word.
We're at like 600,000 right now. Got another 30,000 coming on in three days, so.
So then, are there some others that you're waiting on hearing from?
We probably have a dozen, probably a dozen of them out there that we've had, we've had meetings with, and we haven't heard back, or we're going to follow back up. And I know we have one tomorrow and stuff like that. So we've got at least a dozen out there that are hanging, and then we're going to have, we're going to schedule some more, but there's more at. So if we can get ourselves through pledges to 1.3, then we can start applying for numerous, numerous grants.
To make up the rest.
If this is okay to ask this now, I've had some questions in regards to the foundation.
Yep.
Could, is it possible that you get into this project further in, in the teardown process that, that foundation, it could be deemed that oughtn't know if we need to redo that? Because right now, you're doing the, using the current foundation, right, for?
The grandstand.
The grandstand to get you to that.
So you're saying if we have extra or we don't have enough, is that what you're trying to?
Yeah, I'm saying, what if you get into the project and it's like, oh, you know, that foundation is, isn't as good as we thought it was? What's going to happen if the project ends up being the one?
The money, the money has to go back to whoever donated.
Okay.
So, so let's, let's say the grandstand doesn't. If the grandstand would stop and we don't have enough funding and we, it doesn't go through, all the pledge money has to go back to everybody that's pledged.
Right.
If we got into the project and it's.
That's what I'm saying, we're already into the project.
Yeah, we could just raise more, because this is only phase one of our projects. I mean, we're going to have, we've got three phases of the whole fairground stuff.
Yeah.
It just, it'd be another half million dollars we'd have to raise.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
Okay, because I had that question asked to me, like, how could that foundation be okay after all these years? And I'm like, I don't know.
Yeah, really, the only foundation part is where the steel beams go in through the pillars.
Yeah.
And, and they talked, it's all been tested, but they said they would do it again, and there might be some on the outsides that need replaced.
Okay.
You know, but.
But the roof is brand new because we.
Roof's brand new now.
Brand new now, because we had a wind turbine, so.
You got 140,000 dollars you put in that, so.
Didn't, didn't they already plan to fix some of the foundation, the concrete?
Yeah. It was in there to.
That's part of it.
There were a few of them. Check and repair as needed.
Yeah.
I like you mentioned.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the main beams and the roof are all good. The roof is new of last year, because they went, they put new tin on it, there's an apply with need replaced, they replaced it.
Well, those are questions I'm being asked, because people are like, oh, you know, it's been there for so long, how do they know that that's okay? And is it going to cost more money and?
So if we leave the roof, it's a historical site, so you can apply for historical grants.
Okay.
So if you tear it down, then you, the historical site grants go out of the window.
Sure.
Gotcha.
So that's part of, that's part of leaving it also, because it ties you into that.
Yep.
Okay, good job.
So. Okay, you have any questions?
Yeah, thanks, thanks.
And you can always, if you have questions, call us, we'll, if we don't answer, we will get them for you, okay?
Sounds good.
Thank you, Joe.
So I guess, yeah, in short, what are we going to commit? Are we committing 50, 250?
Well, I, I mean, honestly, the commitment of the 50 was just.
That's in the budget.
You could give them some money, but.
But, but still, I'm just getting at what number we're.
Yeah, I mean, 50 is not the number.
I know.
To me.
But. We had verbally discussed 250. I guess, is there a desire to do more or less than that?
Well, I'm, I'm going to be honest with you with just the comments that I've heard. People watch our, you know, budget
Mm-hmm.
workshops that we have and the need for money in our roads and our bridges and things like that always comes up, and we don't, obviously, we're in a position right now where that's tough because of our limitations and I've heard good that, yeah, give money to the grandstands, absolutely. And then I've heard, but don't take away from our roads and bridges. So it's, when, when we all started this conversation, I was very, I was very comfortable with the 250. I'm going to be honest, I'm not comfortable going over that dollar amount, not at this time. And I don't know, our finances haven't been exactly the best, and to allocate $500,000, it's, it's a lot of money. I'm not comfortable with going that high, that's me.
Okay.
Would it help if we stretched it out to say 10 or 15 years? We're in for the long haul.
Yeah, I know, I, yeah, I get it, I do get it. I mean, obviously.
Just throwing options out.
No, obviously, that does help, but the, the other thing is, we've got to figure out how we're going to borrow this money. We don't have the funds to give you. The 50,000, you know, we have to give you. The other, we have to figure out. That's where I'm hung up. We have to figure that out. And we never know what the state's going to throw at us.
Oh, yeah.
We don't know, you know? There's been questions that have asked, what happens when, like, say they decommission some of these wind turbines? Do they still pay the property tax? I mean, there's a lot of unknown, and that's what scares me about it. So we're going to have to, regardless if it's five years, 10 years, whatever it is, we still have to borrow that money and worry about paying that money back. That's where I get, that's where I get worried. I know you need the commitment. I get that.
Yeah.
And, and I want you to get the commitment, and I want you to be able to move on with the project, I do. I think it's a great project for our county. So.
And, and we can go on about it one of two ways, really, or more if you think about it, but first way, doing with TIP dollars, the second way, this year, we did it out of the general fund, 50,000. Can be a discretionary fund, just like, well, the, the regular money we get to the fair year after year for a 10-year time, and that would be a half million. I'm just throwing this out here, I'm not sharing opinions here, I'm just saying there's, however we want to fund it is, is one thing, it's just
I.
a, a dollar amount is really what we need to come to, what.
Yes, right, and because I will say that, I don't know if I'm comfortable with saying, oh, yeah, we can get 50,000 out of the general fund for the next 10 years
Next 10 years.
because of our limitations, and, and we don't know if those limitations are going to become worse.
No, I understand that, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We have to, we have to take care of what we have to take care of first. And that's my big thing, the, you know, the, yes, if we can use TIP dollars, I think that's amazing. I want to make sure that that works. That's why I'm comfortable with the 250. But you guys have to figure out what you guys are comfortable with, and I already said what I'm comfortable with.
I guess, I've said plenty leading up to this point, so I'm not going to go into too much. I mean, I'm fine with 250, I think that's a good start. To some degree, I would be hesitant of making a 10 or longer year commitment at this point in time. I mean, whether it's me or anyone else, boards change, and, and I wouldn't want to, say we have some motion, and then, I, I don't know if you legally can really tie the hands of future boards that far in advance. I mean, if it was a big contract or something, that's one thing, but just a simple motion on the table, I, I wouldn't be comfortable going that far out. The dollar value, I guess, in regards to TIP specifically, and we're not just talking TIP funds here, but I said from, basically from the beginning, I'd really be comfortable spending two to three years or less of what we expect to come in. So with that being said, I do think we have some room there, even with the fact that we're at, kind of at the bottom of the stair step and it would be ramping up. We do have, I think, solid numbers of what's supposed to come in this year. And in reality, time will tell when that kind of gets through the, the calendar and we, we see the actual money come in, I think that would hopefully be a comfort to all of us on board, but.
It would be, and I, I kind of, I guess, that's my thought, if I can, if we get to the point where we're looking at that TIP money and it is coming in like we expect, it can be readdressed every year, because every year, we have to, we have to have debt in order to capture that money. So it, it doesn't have to be, this is it, book closed, but we have to start with an area where we feel comfortable, where we're not putting anything else that we have to take care of in jeopardy. And, I mean, it can absolutely be readdressed when, you know, at that time, where we're trying to figure out what debt are we going to have. So, you know, I'm, I'm very, I would definitely readdress it, but.
Is it safe to say, and we've had a lot of discussion, maybe through Budget Time and stuff about this, safe to say that we're comfortable with the commitment of 250,000 today? If it gets readdressed in the future, it gets readdressed, and after money comes in, and I don't know if you guys need an answer today, it's.
They, they do, they.
I mean.
Because if you say it's 250, we'd like to have the 250, and, you know, because that we know that, that's where we can proceed with.
Correct.
And, and we're okay with that, we understand it.
Right.
That if you don't get, I don't understand what you want, we want to make sure that the money's coming in.
Right.
Otherwise, how are we going to do this? We totally get.
And that affects you as taxpayers, too.
Exactly, and we also understand that it could be readdressed if the money comes in, hey, we're going to commit a little bit. Yeah, we.
Sounds fair.
We understand.
Yeah.
So, is that kind of, am I on, on the right track there for today?
If, you know, I said what I was comfortable with, I think you guys have to be comfortable with it.
I'm comfortable with that, that's what we came to during Budget, so.
Yep.
As, as you.
Yeah.
And I've said it before, too, that I'm comfortable with the, the 250 over a five-year, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with the 250. I've shared thoughts aloud, and I've shared thoughts privately. One of the stories they tell is, if we aren't going to commit, who is going to commit? Type of thing. I don't know if there's a tighter relationship between the, the county board supervisors and the county fair than there is between the city council of Valvoline and the county fair. city council of Valgona and the county fair, I, you know, legally, there probably isn't, but, uh, implied, maybe there is, I don't know. The, the lines share, the people I talk to, uh, the attitude is, it gets to be a lot of money in a hurry and do you have any business doing that? But then, many of them also say, uh, they hate to see us lose the grandstand. So I guess for today, I'll say, yes, I'm comfortable with the two fifty and, um, open to the future. But I, I agree with whoever said, I apologize, whoever said Kyle, was you tying hands, you know, somebody ten years down the road, I agree with that too, so. Yes, I'd go with the two fifty commitment for today. And I'll make a motion about that.
Two fifty over five years, Howard, or just, okay.
We have, excuse me, we have a motion by, I was gonna second by Garmin to commit two hundred and fifty thousand dollars over five years to the Suth County Fairgrounds grandstand project.
Fifty thousand a year over five years.
Yeah, it's sure, sure. Fifty thousand over five years in the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, is there any further discussion or questions on that motion?
Um, maybe a little bit of a technical piece here, but, um, and I could go with it either way, I'll support the motion as it stands, but otherwise, the, um, thought that kind of popped in my head, and I think I did mention this when we were out at the, um, fairgrounds with that discussion, but with the, if we use TIF funding, I think it would be in our best interest to do that in one chunk, so whether that was in year two or year five or whatever, it may be best to do that in one thing rather than fifty each year, so just in, in regards to the motion, I would suggest maybe fifty this year and then a total of two fifty within five years, but, um, I'm flexible however.
You, you took the words out of my mouth, cuz I was gonna go the same direction there, uh, yeah, yeah, no, I.
Yeah, cuz we don't wanna do a revenue bond of fifty thousand every single year.
Correct, correct.
It's, it's, it's inefficient on the paperwork side of things and it's, quite frankly, it's just not necessary with the volume of what we're dealing with.
Right.
Um, so whether that was sped up or slowed down, I think our motion could represent that aspect.
You're gonna offer an amendment to the motion, though?
So, yeah, I would, I would move to amend the motion that it's fifty thousand this year with a total of two fifty by the end of five years.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Well, after second's the amendment, we're voting on the amendment here. So any discussion on the amendment, everyone understand it? Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous, or the amendment to the motion carries unanimous, now we'll vote on the main motion. And we still have a motion second. Any further discussion on the motion as amended? And if not, uh, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you guys very much.
Can I ask you guys one more question, I never ask it during the session, but, so like, you know, we give the, the twenty-five thousand as well, so what does, will that go towards? Or are you thinking it will go towards?
Run the fair and, and up to the building terms.
Okay.
Something goes up here, yeah.
Okay.
Part of the free day, artists for the free day.
Yeah, the five thousand is for the free day.
Free day stuff, yeah, we have stuff for five. Yeah, it's just for repairs or run the.
That's just gonna help with that, okay.
Exactly.
Very good. Yeah, very good.
We just get a really good year of racing, so we have a little extra money this year.
Well, hopefully, we don't have all the.
We found out last year how important the races are to the funding of the fair, cuz we had so many rainouts. And it's crazy how fast you realize that.
Yeah.
So, thank you guys very much.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for coming in. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. We are up to discussion, decision, clarification of who receives longevity as indicated on resolution zero-two dash twenty-seven dash twenty-four dash zero-one.
Okay, so this came up after last week, um, increasing longevity past twenty years for everyone. When looking at our resolution, our resolution says, um, all full-time employees, um, well, not all full-time employees receive longevity, cuz deputies don't receive longevity and exempt, um, employees don't receive longevity and we do have a part-time person that does receive longevity, so my recommendation is to correct the wording and we don't necessarily have to correct it now, we can correct it in July when we pass it, but, but my recommendation is to change that wording, um, to, um, I don't know.
All full-time employees on the schedule?
Well, it does, we, we need to make sure that we have that part-time person in there too, so I would say, uh, qualified employees or, you know, uh, just change that word from full-time to those that it applies to, whatever you guys think, that's my recommendation.
Yeah, I, I've thought about that before, I mean, it does say all, but I, I know that it doesn't apply to all, so I would, yeah, I would agree, I think we should, um, change, clarify the wording and I don't, I don't know that we need to get into specifics of that today, but.
Um, it, it's just that we have had questions, you know, well, who does this apply to, does it, you know, so, um, because those that are hitting it now are getting it now, so we just wanted to make sure that we, you guys are all on the same page, knowing that, yes, there is a part-time person that does get it and it's not all, and then if we could make that change in July when we approve the resolution, that would be fine, I just needed you to make sure we're all on the same page with this.
I think, would it be a good idea to just send off an email question to our attorney, wondering what the right wording would be? And he can suggest a word, I, unless we can do that, I mean.
Yeah, um.
I think it's, we're just clarifying.
Clarifying.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need to pay an attorney to tell us that, as long as we're clarified in our minds.
Yeah, I.
And for payroll, so.
Yeah, I would just think on it, at least internally for a little while, I mean, if we can't come up with a great thought of how to, how to specify it within a couple weeks, then maybe we discuss it again and if we need advice from an attorney at that point, whatever, but I think, I would think we could come up with a way to describe that that would accurately reflect the situation, so, and I, I don't think we talked about changing who receives it, so I think that should remain the same.
Yep.
I think so too.
Like the current, you will say the current.
Yeah.
You know.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it, it's just the wording is incorrect, I don't think there was any changes that were being made, it's just the wording is not accurate.
Do you want a motion to, um, that will clarify the language or, or you want any action today if we're all, I guess?
I, I think, if you guys have a consensus that, yes, we, it didn't, that this resolution was not meant to make any changes to who it applies to, that, that's fine, I'm fine with that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm with that.
Okay.
Doug has a question.
Yes, sorry, Doug.
That's always been the question, who, who does it apply to?
Who, who doesn't it, maybe we should start with that.
Yeah, before, before, it's always been kind of according to the handbook and according to job descriptions. So if you're an exempt employee, it does not apply to you and if you're like a deputy, which would be exempt, it does not apply to you, um, there's something else to it, now I just forgot. But those would be the, the two main ones, um, unless you, you have a union contract that specifies other, so I think those would be the scenarios.
In the, in the secondary road department, does everybody get that, or, I mean, is it just through the union contract?
Is, is this being discussed because longevity now is no longer for every five years a person works, they receive an additional nickel per hour? Cuz my understanding is that longevity for non-bargaining unit employees was capped at twenty years.
And they changed.
The road department is at thirty. Now, has that been changed, the non-bargaining unit employees?
Yeah, we do extend it because we have employees past that and it's.
So it's just for this non-bargaining unit employees and really you're talking about employees that are in elected officials' offices?
We, yeah, and we talked about, we also talked about how the bargaining, your bargaining unit is up here, coming up, probably this fall, right? So then, um, we talked about maybe having that follow the same, so that it doesn't actually stop, you know, not having up to twenty years or thirty years or, you know, we had that discussion, but figured we'd tighten that up then.
We'll make those changes while we get that.
Yeah.
So are sheriffs deputies?
No, the, it, the, when I, I'm sorry, to clarify, when I meant deputies, I meant deputies in the courthouse.
Are our sheriffs deputies.
They get longevity.
With longevity?
Yes.
And that, you know, also will be language we're gonna have to talk about when we, you know, do that as well.
I mean.
Try to be.
Yeah.
And that's what I think, just. I mean, yeah, just for today, I think we vote for sake of the motion, so we can wrap her up, I would make a motion that we clarify the language for longevity, so it, um, applies to the employees that currently receive it, um, and any changes into the future are obviously separate from that, we'll address anything else separately, but I'd just do a motion that we clarify the language at when we update the resolution for the next fiscal year.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to clarify the language when we update the resolution in the next fiscal year. We have a motion by Stecker, yeah, is there a second, a second by Garmin? Any further discussion on that motion? Questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you for bringing that. All right, we're to discussion, decision, compensation for employees who worked the day the courthouse was closed. And this would be last.
Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
Two weeks ago.
Two, two, two weeks ago, two weeks ago Wednesday, yep, yep.
I'll just start off by saying, I think, do you want me to start off by talking, or were you gonna?
If you had something to say, that's fine.
I was just gonna start off by saying, you know, I think in forms of com- compensation, if, if they get a floating holiday or however it needs to be worded, I, I, I think that would be a great way of expressing gratitude for working when others were fortunate enough to not have to go out in, in the conditions. Um, I, as far as bottom line of, you know, money, it, it doesn't cost us money, it, um, just has to be an extra day that has to be used as paid time off, um, so, that being said, I am referencing that and if we wanna make the motion and then have a discussion, or if we wanna just talk about it before, I mean, what's everyone's thoughts?
I, I am a little bit concerned with that, um, and, and not only the secondary roads portion of it, they, but for other employees, because I don't want it to become a thing where, where, oh, the courthouse is closed, but if I can make it to work, I'll get a floating holiday. And then you got, then you could potentially have employees risking their safety just to get to the courthouse.
I think we had something at one time, I don't know if it's writing, in writing, where if the courthouse is closed, you, you cannot come into the courthouse, you do not get any compensation time if you come in. I think in your motion, you just have to clarify that it's to those people that don't have a choice, basically, like deputies and secondary roads.
Because, yeah, when, I think it's been, um, put out there and, and like I said, I don't know if you, this board or with Tammy has had the conversation, but when I was the auditor, we had the conversation that, you know, if we, if we close the courthouse, um, we're closing it because we don't feel it is okay for you to come to work and, and you stay home.
Correct.
It's a safety issue and, and, you know, it doesn't happen all the time.
No.
Um, so, i- it's not like it happens twenty times a year, you know, and we only close the courthouse when it's, it, it's deemed, don't leave your house.
Yeah.
It's happened twice since I've been on the board.
Yeah, and, and we do it for the safety of the citizens too, because if, if Sheriff Fisher and, and Doug Miller say, no travel is recommended, we don't want them coming in to do their business on those days either.
Because by golly, they're stubborn, they're stubborn enough to try it, some people, so, so it is for everyone's safety, you know, so.
So, I, I'm just gonna, I'm, I was just gonna, read our handbook, does address some of this, um, says during inclement weather, because the Suth County serves the citizens of the county, county offices will remain open during normal business hours, however, in cases of severe weather, the following may be followed. A, if an employee is unable to get to work, he or she will be allowed to charge such an absence to vacation, compensatory time or personal time provided he, she has the time accumulated. B, in extreme circumstances, the auditor, under the direction of the chairman of the board of supervisors, may determine that it is necessary to close the courthouse or other county offices slash facilities, in this case, the employee will receive their normal pay based on their regularly scheduled workday. C, employees in departments that serve the public during severe weather, including departments that provide snow removal and law enforcement services, are expected to report to work during severe weather conditions. That's what our handbook says for inclement weather. So, how it currently stands is that, I mean, for road workers, for deputies, if it's, I mean, it's in their job description to report during inclement weather, it's just, I guess, the board can decide whether something on a special circumstance would be given above and beyond that. That's. But that, that's the expectations of employment, is that, I, I, I'm just saying, that's what, that's outlined in the handbook, so that's kinda how it's generally would be handled.
Well, obviously, and I don't think we're doing this because it's like, oh, well, thank God they showed up, I mean, no, that's not why we're doing it, we're doing it as a, you know, um, thank you for being able to do that so that the rest of us could stay home safely, so, you know, if, I mean, if you want me to make a motion, I can make a motion.
Yeah.
I mean, I would make.
You certainly can make a motion, if somebody, somebody else has thought.
Okay, I would make the motion, I would make the motion, um, to compensate employees that have to work when the, if you wanna say facilities, I don't know if you wanna say courthouse or facilities, need to be closed um, due to no travel being issued by our sheriff and private emergency management, um, the people that do have to report to work may take a floating holiday at some point upon approval of their department. Yes, Phil, I'm sorry, Carter.
Well, we, we have a motion on the floor, so hold discussion real quick. So there's a motion by Garmin, could, could you repeat the motion so I know what?
Yes.
She's gotta finish writing.
Yeah, I gotta finish writing. Can talk faster than I can write. Okay. A motion by Garmin to compensate employees that have to work when facilities have to be closed because of no travel advised, advised by sheriff and emergency manage, and, and may take a floating holiday at some point upon the approval of the department.
Yeah, at some point during the year, probably.
Some point.
I, I, yeah.
During the year.
So it's not.
Yep.
Just, yeah.
During the year, upon approval of the department.
Yes.
Okay.
I said a lot.
Well, there is a motion and in order to have any discussion, we'd have to have a second, otherwise the motion's done.
I'll second to have a discussion.
We have a second by Haas. So, yeah. Any discussion on the motion and Phil had, did have his hand raised?
Yeah, so, there's so much diversity around the county and the different departments, it's, it's so hard to be, to keep things cohesive amongst everybody. For us, when we were hired, we, we were hired knowing that we have to work twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, regardless of snowing, blowing. Well, Christmas Day, New Year's Day, whatever the day is, we're expected to work. The issue I have with this motion is a day off to us is twenty-four hours. Are you gonna pay us for twenty-four hours to have a day off? Why have to pay somebody twenty-four hours to be gone for a day? Plus, I have to hire somebody to come in on overtime to fill that shift because we cannot work short. So it will cost us money to do that. I would rather if we're gonna do something, say, um, you guys get eight hours of pay for the day off or eight hours of.
Well, that's what I was gonna ask you, so when somebody takes a vacation day, they take twenty-four hours?
They have to use sixteen hours because sixteen hours is their regular pay and eight hours is a downtime. So when they take a day off, they have to use sixteen hours.
Okay, so they.
The jailers are the kind of the same way, and I don't wanna speak for jail staff, but I know they work twelve hour shifts, I believe. So if you give them a day off, they're gonna have to be able to receive twelve hours rather than eight. The deputies work nine and a half, I believe, ten?
Ten.
Ten? So, you, we have three departments that work on a day off with snow that are required to receive three different amounts of hours to get a day off.
That's how it works for vacation.
Okay.
Well.
How are they compensated for Christmas Day?
We get eight hours of holiday pay for the day and then the ones that work it get paid time and a half.
They get eight hours regular and.
Correct.
And that's what we set up for the holiday.
So if you're gonna do the eight hours, you'd be better off just to pay them off the eight hours for that or. You know, the courthouse, you have people at departments that work different hours in the courthouse and when they're hired, they know this is what's expected of them, this is their hours. When our people are hired, this is what's expected of them, this is their hours. It's a fact of life.
Yeah, I guess I have a lot of thoughts here. One, I think it's, uh, something I'd be very cautious about because it would be setting a precedent. Another is, um, I guess, no matter what we do in this situation, we're gonna be the bad guys. We're either gonna be, um, criticized by employees for not giving extra compensation in some form or we're gonna be criticized by taxpayers for, um, giving extra compensation when likely or potentially, they probably didn't receive any extra compensation from their employer. I could list off a number of examples off the top of my head.
What are you talking about? Can you say that again?
Um, like another employer here in town, say Snap-on or any of the other companies, if they close due to snow, most of them are probably not compensating their employees. So whether it's the business that's paying tax or the landowners, residents that are paying that tax, um, for us to provide a service, that's a benefit we'd be giving that they wouldn't be receiving comparable stuff from their employer hypothetically. Um, and I guess there's to some degree, a mitigating factor of a vacation day versus overtime or extra compensation. But at the same token, um, I, I do know Humboldt County, um, just had a very similar conversation at their board meeting yesterday. I've considered with one of their supervisors about this a couple times. And he said they unanimously are not going to do anything. Um, I mean, we, we got a potential storm coming tomorrow. But are we gonna repeat this exact conversation in another week or two for that? I just.
I don't think it was intended for, um, storm by storm conversation, if I, I just wanna say that first. I, if that, I guess when I made the motion, that's not what my intent was.
I, I get that, but even if it's not a conversation every time in this board room, by the motion, it appears to me that it would be a benefit by each situation if the courthouse is closed. So although it doesn't happen very often typically, um, I think it's something that needs to be strongly considered and I guess I'm just not comfortable with it in general.
And we're, and, uh, just one comment here, we're not discussing whether to compensate employees or not because employees were compensated their regular pay.
Yep, correct.
I mean, that's, that's just a given.
Yep, this is a, an above and beyond what's already, um, laid out.
Correct.
And, and I appreciate Carter reading what's in the handbook verbatim so that everybody can have that language fresh in their mind, but.
And, you know, you can look at it also that employees that didn't have to come to work were compensated and had paid day off. So, I mean, I'm looking at it in terms of that, they were compensated and they got the day off. So that's where my motion was meant to go with it, so I just wanted to clarify that.
And I do understand that, but this would be something that is outside of our handbook and I think until the handbook is changed to address the situation where the courthouse is closed, without actually changing what's written in the handbook, I would not be comfortable going outside of that policy. So, that, I guess that's where I'm gonna leave it unless someone asks questions for me for now.
Okay. Josh or Howard have any thoughts before we go to vote?
I have a lot of thoughts.
Okay.
So we, we kinda set a precedence if we started, uh, giving these vacation days to the employees that do work and stuff. And then what happens if we have, you know, three or four of these events in a year? You know, we could have a really bad year. Well, then we've got, um, how many employees are gonna be trying to take those extra days of vacation and on a scheduling, you know, that could be a nightmare. Trying to schedule those people into getting their vacations to get even stuff. Um, and then on top of that, you know, you're, you're still paying the employee for that day and then you're paying the employee for not, you know, coming to work that day for that vacation day. Yes, that, you know, to work within the budget and everything. Um, but then you also have to keep in mind what Phil said. You know, he's gonna have to pay overtime for those employees that are coming in on day off just so that other employee can take their day off for that, that event. Um, my, my opinion with the way I think we should treat this is, um, similar to how employees work on a holiday. Um, regular courthouse employees get the day off and get the paid day, same as to what the storm event was. Employees that are expected to work those days get paid time and a half. I feel like that, you know, to compensate those employees for the, the time that they worked during the time that the courthouse was closed, they're getting that extra compensation treated the same as a holiday, they would get the paid time and a half.
I'm sure you understood the last paragraph.
So, so, let, let's, uh, let, let's put it in the aspect of, um, well, Phil, since you're in here, we get, the courthouse is closed on Christmas Day. You have employees that end up working Christmas Day, do they get paid time and a half on Christmas Day?
Correct.
That's the example that I'm saying, so we count the closure as a holiday. The employees that do work during that closure get paid time and a half, treated like a holiday.
I guess that, I mean, I would take that as an amendment.
It could be a handbook change.
And I guess that's the one thing I'd say back to that, that, that would be the same thing of, it would be contrary to what's in our handbook. So as far as today, I, I think.
Well, we can, I mean, I think that anytime we change something in the handbook for the benefit of the employees, we're, it, it's not necessarily considered a bad thing. If we're changing something, um, in a positive way, we're not taking away. Um, you know, we're giving something and with the intent of changing that in the future. And I think that's okay to do. I don't think anybody's gonna raise red flags that, oh my gosh, they gave us extra. But, but if we're gonna take away, yeah, absolutely, if it's in the handbook.
Depends on which viewpoint you're looking at it from, the employee or the taxpayer.
Well, we're the, well, we're the employer.
I, I'm aware.
We are the employer and so I, I don't know of any taxpayer who has asked for a copy of our handbook.
You, you could, you could present this to the taxpayer as, do you wanna pay time and a half for the employee that worked that day? Or do you wanna pay overtime for the employee that has to cover for a day while another employee is getting a paid day off? I mean, you're, I feel like that would be more to cover, you know, an employee having a day off and then paying an employee overtime to be there to cover that shift.
I, I don't think it's an either or conversation today. I mean, there's multiple options on the table, but it's not, it's not just those two.
Yeah.
Howard?
Yeah, I have, I have thoughts. I, I, my cognizant that I seconded the motion, I did that to get to the discussion phase. So this is gonna sound, uh, contrary to, to the motion. You've got the problem that it's in, you, you don't want people traveling if, if they don't need to. It was, it, I, even though I wasn't out in it, it was bad two weeks ago. Uh, there, and I don't know, I don't know how many, whether it's EMS and if my, if I have my letters wrong, please correct me. Or if it's, uh, EMA or if it's sheriff or it's road workers or it's jailers, somebody's gotta be there. And, and, and I assume people step up. I, I don't know where the people come from specifically in the EMS department, I don't know where the people come from.
Keep going, Howard.
Yeah, keep going.
In the, in the jailers department, uh, but if, if they're coming from ten miles away. Guys, I didn't, I wouldn't have wanted to come that day, but I don't know, I don't know, and I wouldn't have wanted the ambulance to go out either. But I suppose you have to go out if you have to go out, I don't know, with a maintainer in front of you, I don't know how that worked. Uh, there's many different departments with many different, uh, type thing. And then you got people that maybe could make it for a partial day. You know, the courthouse is closed and maybe they decided by one o'clock they could come in. So they came in and worked, if it was the road department, maybe they worked until six o'clock until it got dark, I don't know. Uh, or, or if it was a jailer, okay, I couldn't come in at eight, but I could come in at noon. To me, it's, it's easiest, the thing to do is to do nothing, you know, and maybe reevaluate at the end of the winter if you wanna, if you wanna do something, you know, if you have multiple days. I realize we haven't been shut down for more than one day in recent memory in, in any year. Uh, it's also easier, another easier alternative, and this goes to there's, there's alternatives on the table and don't, please don't crucify me for this. Uh, it's, it's easy to change the handbook and say nobody gets paid if they don't come in. Uh, and I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying it's easier to do that. Uh, I, I, I don't know, you know, we get, I hear a lot of fair and equal all the time and, uh, life isn't fair. I, I don't know, I, I don't know what's right, there's, there's multi, I, I'm wishy washy here, I'm sorry. But, uh, I, I'm not in favor of doing anything today. I, I guess, let's talk about what's bad around, let's hear from the department, guess what they think should happen. Let's, uh, but, uh, I, I do appreciate the people who came in, I do appreciate the people who plowed the roads. I do appreciate the people who came into the jail, I appreciate the sheriff's department. But I can't imagine if, I'm sorry, I don't know everybody, but the, the last deputy hired was from three miles inside of Hancock County. I can't imagine that person came to Algona that day. Maybe they did and, and I don't know if that's good or bad if they did it. And I, I don't mean to make an example of that person, but it was rough out there, right? I mean, I, I, I don't, and, and then if, if you're gonna get, you're gonna incentivize, possibly incentivize some people to, to stay home that could've got here and possibly incentivize some person to get here that was gonna stay home. I, I don't, I just, it's a, it's a big camp to me that we're, we're, we're looking at. And when, maybe, I don't know how old the handbook is, but maybe when the handbook was written, uh, I'm super cold, we had to jail, we had to jail for quite a while, but maybe we didn't have EMS and I, I don't, I, I, I guess my thought process is tread carefully.
Yeah, just to touch on the history side there, we, EMS was not a county department when any of that language was changed. And we have had conversations about the handbook and updating things, um, and that's still kind of a work in progress. So if there was any conversation about that as part of the handbook conversation, I think we could also or continue the conversation at that point. But, um, yeah, I just wanted to touch on that history side out real quick. And I think we did have them log in for our call, but I think we need to finish our discussion.
Yep.
One more comment?
Yeah, just to say you are, I'm on and ready whenever you are.
Okay, just hold on one second if you could please, we'll be right with you. Yeah, we, we need to go to vote, Phil, but real, real quick.
Um, I like the idea of doing what Josh said, time and a half, because it is, so like tonight, I'll have people who come to work tonight because they can travel. Um, the ones that live out of town, they'll come in and they'll sleep in the house so they're able to start work at seven o'clock in the morning. So it is putting them out, it is putting them extra. My issue was the time because there's too much difference between the departments to say you get a day off. That was the only reason I, I questioned that was because of the different hours and it's just gonna cause for delays. I think time and a half is a great way to compensate these people because they are putting extra effort in. Make sure they're here, ready to go to work tomorrow morning, they'll be here tonight.
And that's a separate discussion we can have, but we have a motion and a second on the floor. So if we could do a roll call vote, please.
Haas?
No.
Garmin?
Yes.
Stecker?
No.
Wacter?
No.
Nass?
No. Motion fails, one to four. Okay, thank you. And let's, if there's anything else to entertain with that topic, we can, but let's go back to the, to the tip, um, discussion since our attorney's on the phone. Uh, good morning, Amy, and thanks for being with us.
Good morning, how's everybody?
Doing fine. So, we, we have a, we had a couple of questions from the board here, uh, and just wanted clarification and some answers. So, uh, I'll open it up to the board to, um, I guess entertain those questions.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that you can hear me, okay? Amy, this is Amber.
Hi Amber, yep, I can hear you.
Okay, okay. So I, I guess my question, um, is what fueled the phone call. Um, I have some reservations as far as, um, having a project in the city in our urban renewal area. Um, so first off, um, I don't know my questions, I was trying to put them in a way that's not being redundant. Um, so I guess my first question is, how can the county have a project in the urban renewal area that's located in the city limits?
Um, well, the, the county went through the proper procedures last fall to establish their urban renewal area. And part of that involved getting the consent of the city, which the county did receive, so the law does allow the county to go in city limits to have an urban renewal area. Um, and so the county has followed the proper procedures to include that property in the urban renewal area.
Right, and, and when, um, when something's put in the urban renewal area, is it usually because it, it is something that we're obligated to take care of? Um, or are we just kinda picking different things that we want to be an obligation? And it's not necessarily an obligation of the county?
Um, you know, there's different reasons why, why we include different urban renewal projects in our plans, right? Um, I think that when we're going through, but, but having it in an urban renewal, having a project approved in an urban renewal plan does not obligate the county to undertake the project. It just gives the county the authority to undertake the project should the county decide to proceed with the project as an urban renewal project, which gives the.
Right, but when we. Uh, yeah, and I understand, you know, the purpose of having the area. Um, this is pretty much more specific as putting, you know, the grandstand project in the urban renewal area. So, basically where that's me.
Go ahead, can you finish up your topic?
Basically where that question is leading to. Basically where that question is leading to is um what is the. I I like to look at the taxes as being a benefit to the taxpayers and we have to answer to what that benefit is. Uh what was the thought process for the grandstand project being in this?
Economic development.
For the for the county or the city?
County. Uh that's, I don't know if you heard me, Amy, sorry, this is Kyle. Um economic development is one of the factors that we can use for TIF for um a reason for projects and stuff, right?
Right, exactly.
But what would the econo, I guess where I feel like there's gray area is what is that economic development? I just wanna make sure that when we use these funds, we're using them appropriately. Um I get it that the project's in there, but we also have to answer to everyone how we use those funds. I guess I'm trying to understand, is the economic development factor a gray area for this project? Not for everything else. I mean, these questions are just for this project.
Is that, are you asking me that, Amber?
Yes.
Um county, city, county buildings, city buildings, there, I mean, my job is to help the county follow the law. And pass the law and make the day, county county buildings and and um and I guess this one is privately owned, but. Assistance, using taxing on financing urban renewal powers to assist private property owners with. You know, things like uh tourism and amenities and building, yes, I mean, it's legal. And the board supervisors made the determination last fall when they approved this project as an urban renewal project that it met the qualifications needed um.
What were those qualifications?
Uh that it that it qualifies as an economic development project in the urban renewal area.
Okay, how is, uh and you know, I'm just, I'm not trying to push it, but I'm just saying, what are those qualifications to become an economic development area for the county? Anything?
Well, it really, it quite frankly, it's really that determination by the county board supervisors. Now, you wanna have fast circumstances to back it up, right?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think we can all understand that. Um in certain circumstances, this tourism, you know, and tourist amenities like playgrounds promote. You know, growth in the community. And so I think that's probably where they determine that it fit into the picture.
Okay.
Right, I mean, I don't wanna speak for the supervisors that are that are there that were on the on the boards last fall and they.
Well, that's o, well, that's okay. They they kind of said that you'd be the best one to have on the phone here for this. Um so then, so then basically, I'm just, I'm going to ask the question because I want it on record. So if this is ever questioned in the past, you know, um if this is in any way a gray area, you know, in in just my experience. I'm sorry, I dealt with, you know, Bob Justin when he was still here with us. And um.
Yeah.
He said that there's gray area. He goes, the way you gotta look at the gray area is, is it gray area that can be defended in court? Or is it gray area that you just choose to have that maybe wouldn't be? So I'm asking you, is this gray area or is this black and white? And if this is gray area, could this be defended in court?
Uh I I don't think it's very gray when you're dealing with tourist amenities to say that they promote economic development. Um and you have to understand too that in this area of law, the board is going to get. And their decisions is going to have, you know, be given the the most amount of deference by a judge. Because this is a, you know, activity of the board supervisors in which they have the discretion to make these determinations.
Okay, okay, so then my next question kind of goes towards um. How the money.
So let's 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 just finish this through so you so you can kind of see. As as far as I know, the board has not determined to move forward with the process. Is that correct?
Well, we just, let's go ahead.
Yeah, so we had another item on our agenda today, which we actually discussed a little bit before we did this call because we didn't know that it was scheduled at nine and it was uh just the order of the agenda, it wasn't an issue. But we did already talk with the fair um couple of fair board members about a commitment towards the grandstand project. We did not specifically say that it was directly TIF dollars. We do have some general um fund dollars that we are committing from this current year's budget. And we have a total commitment on top of that within the next five years. But uh TIF is one of the tools that we have on the table that we are discussing of if those funds are available to use towards the commitment that we made this morning or any other or future commitments. So it's it's not the only piece of the puzzle.
It might be amenable, but remember, you have to go into debt to use TIF either through an internal advance or a, you know, external block payment.
Yeah, yeah, we understand, you know, how we need to uh come up with the money if we choose to use the TIF dollars. Let's just say that. So then, I mean, this question is putting the cart before the horse, but it is something I want answered before, you know, having the conversations of how we're going to pay for this. So uh the Kuzuth County Agricultural Association is the owner of the property. Okay, that houses the grandstand. They are a nonprofit organization. Uh Rob Sand has put out their opinions on uh municipalities donating money towards nonprofits. Okay, it looks like a cash donation. Um it's it's kind of frowned upon, uh you know, I guess. So how could we?
There's certain procedures you want to follow and you're gonna do. Yes, we're very familiar with those.
Well, that's what I'm trying to get to as my question. What kind of procedures are we going to have to follow so that it's not a cash donation?
Well, it's not that it's not a cash donation, but what we would look at is how to document it. Um and we have chapters, you know, fifteen A that allows um cities and allows municipalities to provide economic development incentives. This is even a, in addition to the earth renewal chapter. And I think what Rob really wants is these documented by agreement, right? Um and so if you choose to provide assistance to the to the fair board, there's there's different ways you can do it. You can, you know, you can determine how you wanna set it up, whether you wanna have it. Be a one-time, you know, economic development grant or if you wanna pay them. You know, over the years, over a certain period of years, it's very flexible to how you set it up. And then the best thing that we can do then is to have the board adopt a resolution approving the economic development grant and making the appropriate findings under chapter fifteen A. And then um documenting whatever incentive you choose to provide to the fair board through an agreement.
Okay. All right, well, that answers that. I wanted to know how to, you know, from an audit standpoint, where we don't get dinged for that, that we follow the proper procedure. So if, you know, if we need to have an agreement, okay.
Yep, and and that does make sense because in the last couple of years with Rob Sand's opinions coming out and stuff. We did um enter into a number of twenty-eight D agreements and stuff of that nature with some of our other entities we give discretionary funding to. So that does um make sense if it just needs to be documented a certain way to cross our Ts and dot our Is. So that does make sense to me.
Yeah, that's, that was kind of the purpose of this. I wanted to make sure that, you know, we follow everything that we need to if we're going to go this route to fund this project.
Yes, yes, um totally understood and we can, we can do that. We have our municipality clients document. You know, economic development incentives all the time, so.
Okay.
It's just a matter of structuring it, what you want it to look like, um and then getting it, getting it down, so.
Okay. I think that answers all my questions.
Yeah, sounds good to me. Um.
Wonderful.
Anyone else?
Uh so you'll be in touch if you decide you wanna move forward with this?
Absolutely, yep.
Yep.
Excellent. Well, nice talking with you. Do you all have any other questions?
I'm not seeing any.
No.
I appreciate you being with us today.
Yep, thank you.
Happy to, happy to chat with you all. Have a good rest of your week.
You as well.
Stay.
Okay. Very good. Um we are up to discussion decision to approve roadside noxious weed spraying calendar for the year twenty twenty-five. Thanks for your patience. Nate and Doug?
Nate, I believe you've uh you've met Carter, Josh, and Kyle. Amber.
Two new ones.
Garmin and. Hold on, pause. This is Nate Greifer. Nate is the owner of BMW who has done our road spraying and he has submitted a proposal. I have put in your packet, your electronic packet, a copy of that proposal as well as a location map. Um and we we kinda have a three-year uh rotation where every at the end of three years, the whole county, the road department, or the roads have been sprayed. Now, from there, Nate, maybe you wanna go over your proposal if there are any questions?
Uh yeah, any questions, I guess. Pretty much routine uh spraying for us. The only change this year is a couple of products that we're gonna be using other than the usual Patron. Uh they're not gonna make Patron anymore is what I've been told. So we are gonna use Free Lex and Escort together, which does a really good job. Almost every county other than Kuzuth uses those products that we spray in. And they get a good result with those, so we're hoping to do the same thing.
Is there a reason we didn't change those other project products before?
Uh I think it was just kind of, that was the way we had done it in the past and it's a, Patron was a good product. It's just they don't use it anymore. They don't make it anymore. And the only complaint I would have about that product was the smell. Uh it caused a lot of people to be aware of what was going on, really. But these two products. What's that?
That was the old one or the new one?
That was the old one.
Okay.
Patron one seventy is a two forty product, really good product, but over the years, they've gotten better. The Free Lex is another two forty product, but it's got a full aquatic label. It's just a newer product that gets along with a lot more. Situations with spraying, you know, there's a lot of spraying near water or different. I like to say there's a lot of gray area when it comes to spraying. Some people don't like it, some people need it. But that's the only change other than, you know, the mileage is always the same for each section of the county that we do. Um that's the blanket spraying and then the spot spraying is gonna be for the middle third. And that's the same st, same chemicals that we've used. It's a milestone. We use it later in the year. It does a really good job on this, killing the seeds of the plants for like thistles and stuff like that, stuff that got a chance to seed out over the year, so.
Nate, I'm I'm on the, this makes me think of this, I'm on the watershed commission and and different things. And and I know whatever you're doing is not even a fraction of what, you know, ag producers are doing out in spraying. But is there any? Uh any, I guess. Have you run into any issues with using like two forty products and and other things when you're trying to preserve water quality and and that sort of thing and runoff? And I, from what you're doing, just because you're spraying along the ditches and.
With the two forty stuff, uh not really. It's like with the Escort and the Free Lex, the combo. The Free Lex is mainly gonna be like your initial burn, like that's gonna, that's gonna hit the plant, people are gonna see it right away. While the Es, the Escort has time to work. Uh they're a lot less sensitive than the Patron one seventy, which we didn't have any issues like that in like Story County. They specifically have us use those products because they have a lot more native plants, native flowers, stuff like that. A lot of wet road roadside areas because of that situation. And that's the stuff we use down there.
Okay.
With their their uh uh weed management programs through the conservation down there, so.
Yeah.
I get an education from them.
Yeah, I was, I was just kinda curious what you ran into.
Uh no, not really. I mean, uh with the two forty, the the Patron, the stuff that we're not gonna use, that did cause a lot of problems. A lot of people.
Okay.
If they would smell the product, I mean, it had a heavy odor. Uh but like I said, that was the main complaint about it, really.
Sure.
This money is in the.
Our big budget for this year.
I know, I know, you do it every other year. And so some of these costs for like the the chemicals, that's, you know, that's a rough estimate. Uh with the Patron, we did that at sixty-four ounces an acre. We use roughly nine hundred gallons a a third. So with the Free Lex, it'll be half that. It'll be thirty-two ounces an acre. So that's just a rough estimate at five hundred gallons. It'll probably be quite a bit less than that. Uh same with the Escort. The the product is a rough estimation on basically what you are out there spraying for acres.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Contract with BMW?
Motion by Haas.
Second.
Second by Garmin. Any discussion on the motion to approve the contract with BMW Brush Control?
Just a quick question, Doug. Maybe I'm seeing things wrong, but I come up with a different total than on your motion. Um I come up with hundred and seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-two and that's.
We uh.
I had a, I had a flip flop on a couple of numbers.
Okay, okay, okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
It's been changed on our.
Okay, alright, okay, sounds good. I just, I just.
My computer skills are very rough.
Sorry about that.
No, that's fine.
There is a, there is an agreement. I brought that up to Nate. He submitted a second one.
Okay, so the total is hundred and seven thousand six hundred and two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, still motion second? Good, good with that. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, nay? Motion is unanimous. Thanks, Nate.
All right.
Your house looks nice.
Uh yeah, it's coming along.
It's coming.
I go to work to relieve the stress of that, so.
It always takes longer than you think.
Uh well, you know, first it was some uh some things that they were waiting on or whatever. And then as soon as that showed up, the weather got bad. And then as soon as the weather started getting better, then everything got wet.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a journey, so, but.
Yeah, Wes, thanks.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, up to construction and the right-of-way?
Uh yeah, we have received one request. This would be Titanca Burke Communications. Uh they have a, they are requesting to put fiber optic communication line in a road right-of-way right on the east side of Titanca. Uh they are going to be putting up not not Titanca Burke, but US Cellular, I believe, is putting a communication tower up right on the east side of Tyke. And this communication cable then would go back south. And this communication cable then would go back south to where the cell phone tower is at and allow the communication through that fiber optic. I recommend that the board approve of this request.
Okay, there's a motion to approve.
For this application.
There's a motion by Garmin to approve the right-of-way request.
I'll second.
Second by Wachter. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion unanimous. Alright, any other work in the right-of-way?
Uh, that was the only request, Carter.
Good.
Here, feel the sign down there, please.
You bet.
Alright, thanks.
Yep, thank you. You can roll into discussion whenever you're ready.
Yeah, just, uh, thank you for having that discussion on the compensation. I know that that's a issue. It's been discussed before and certainly when we get the new handbook, we can have more discussion on that as well. Um, I am planning to take some vacation next week, so I do not believe I'll be at the board meeting a week from today. We do have that blizzard warning. Then we will be talking with the road department, the foreman. Kind of right now, it looks like it'll be raining at this time tomorrow and then move on to snow about ten o'clock. Lot of wind again. Question about how much snow is gonna melt, different things like that. But certainly watching the weather, the road department is. You'll notice I did request, uh, from ISAC, I took off in the county pickup and it had low fuel. I ended up having to fill it up at a fuel station. You'll notice I put a claim in for that. Unfortunately, took off and then saw that I needed gas.
We've all done that.
Um, looking for some, do have some positions we're advertising for, interviewing for. Uh, working on, uh, getting some requests for proposals for equipment. Uh, we have a letting today. In fact, it may have been opened. It's for our asphalt at the Department of Transportation. So that's kind of everything. And then I'm working on FEMA stuff as well. Uh, for the waste management, get prepared for the annual meeting. I gotta get an email out to make sure we get a date that everyone will work for. And then also do have the, um, post-closure work that will be coming. Do you have any idea when the audit will be completed for fiscal year twenty-four?
I'm hoping, um, they'll be here next week, but I don't know for sure.
So we may be able to meet the April. Yeah, we may be able to meet the April one deadline. For that post-closure, kind of depends on the math. Audit gets filed.
Yeah, well, they haven't started it yet, so.
Okay.
This was a ten o'clock meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, come on in. Come and sit down, yep, yep.
And just a little bit from zoning, I've been working with Cory Peterson. Last week was a very busy, uh, lot of questions. Going on with zoning, so I'm meeting with Cory. Cory and I kind of just visited. Gonna start meeting with him weekly until we get, try to get through all the work that's going on. Somebody has some experience. That'll. That is, that's the idea.
Okay. Thanks for taking time with Cory to meet with him and do that. Any other questions for Doug? Today? Alright, well, thank you and enjoy your time off next week. Uh, do we want to take a short break here?
Yes, please.
Yep, let's, let's do a short break and we'll come back and.
Thank you.
Let's come back in ten minutes and we'll do auditor and board discussion.
We got the drainage hearing.
And then we'll have the drainage hearing at ten, so.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just handing these out for some information. Excuse me. You're good, you're good. I changed my directions on you.
Hey, how are you?
Good, good. We don't find out that.
Yeah. Good morning.
Well, Mr. Coruska.
Yeah.
Not too much.
You're fine, man?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Oh, I know. You have to try move it back a little bit. I don't wanna do that.
Move back from there on.
Well, somebody handles that right, you guys.
That's a little, guys, I, I haven't watched lately, but the stuff you throw up in front of you, sometimes glares out the cameras, the camera glares out.
Oh, does it?
Yeah, so I haven't watched lately, but it's something I keep on mind.
Oh, okay. Well, especially, I guess, probably especially if it's glossy like that.
Yeah, it was a, I don't even remember what it was at the time. Was it the week before you were gone that one time? It was something.
Was it a fair thing?
Yeah, there was something up there that we moved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway.
You, you were the one that did it. It's all your fault.
Yeah.
Of course.
It's no fault. Just be it.
Yeah, I try to have my flat at least so I can look over it, but depending on how the lights and the sun comes in.
That was a long time ago.
But I thought we already. Sent to Kyle, just thinking he was a chair and then he afforded me originally.
I don't know, it was Maryland, it is, but we had already sent that a long time ago.
Bargaining and stuff like that. Did you get something else?
Got this. Somebody got that.
Um, I'd have to look to see who we sent it to last time.
Yeah, that was the original one. He afforded to me.
I was gonna say, I knew, I knew I had sent that on.
So I don't know what the deal is there, I guess.
Well, I will.
Making you aware. You want me to forward it to you?
Well, yeah.
I'll forward it to you so you have her email.
Yeah.
Okay, oh, we're waiting on here. Supplies for job this afternoon.
Oh.
Farms. Just happened to catch the sunrise right at the perfect time.
This is all of the.
Out north of the river in there. Pictures don't do justice, but.
Yeah, I know. So that's really pretty.
It was really neat. I gotta get.
Black photos that show the, the laser ring. I got rid of like hundreds and some pages of that. But this is all the documentation for the percentages and.
Does it show it like every so maybe?
Yeah, and it's got, it's like it's callouts and then this has the, the stationing and then the, the deflection amount per lineal foot.
Watch your elbow, right?
Yeah, per, per lineal foot and then your percent deflection. So like to this section, everything was less than two percent.
Okay, yeah.
And it's.
Yeah, we can add that to the record.
Yep.
Okay.
An actual physical one would be.
Yep.
Yeah, perfect. Okay, we're all back and we've got a few minutes here before the hearing, so let's go ahead and do auditor discussion.
Okay, um, first thing is I'm, we're, we're starting to work on budget amendment. The last one of the year, so I'll be getting stuff to you regarding that here in the next week or so. Then I went to spring, ISAC Spring Conference, Thursday and Friday. Had a lot of good discussions. There is a couple bills, um, that we need to keep a close eye on and maybe talk to our legislators about. I did not write down what the bill names were, but I can send you that information. The purpose of the bill is to completely reform taxes and.
Not surprising.
And, uh, one of the things that would happen if this bill passes is they would phase out rollbacks. So over four years, they would phase them out. We no longer have rollbacks. The homestead exemption will reach twenty-five thousand dollars. Okay, now let me think of this, um, twenty-five thousand dollars. The sixty-five and over will continue to rise up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, they, we will be limited to two percent growth. And that quest to get all counties down to three fifty and three ninety-five, that dirty thirty, goes away. There, that will no longer be part of the equation. They don't care anymore, period.
So they don't have to anymore?
Correct.
Well, that's not fair to us.
I know. The egg rollback will stay. And that's the big parts of the bill, so, um, they've asked us to talk to legislators, um, about how that would affect our county. And that's only on general, um, and rural basic, so, um, I'm hoping to get more information. I will forward it along to you so you can become familiar with it. Um, it will make a lot of changes for Cassisuth County and then of course being limited to two percent.
It's a two percent overall for these evaluations, everything.
But two percent growth.
And, uh.
How's that work in, excuse me, I'm sorry. How's that work in the era of.
It's like where we are now, where we're limited to three. It's just gonna, it's just gonna put it down to three, two, so it's gonna reduce it even further if this bill passes. It's like where we are now, where we're limited to three, it's just gonna, it's just gonna put it down to three, two, so it's gonna reduce it even further if this bill passes.
And in the stuff from ISAC, um, if you have any more, I'll let you keep going, but I can maybe add on a little bit. The property tax reform section that adheres since the rebuild twelve oh eight and houses that are built, third, three thirteen. Um, and they would, I'll try and summarize here a little bit, but it does take the homestead exemption to twenty-five thousand. Um, it would shift from a state of funding of reimbursements to a system of locals absorbing the reduction in taxes. Uh, so that's outlined here, but then, um, the rollback would no longer exist. It says during this transition, the general basic and early basic funds would be limited to two percent growth on property taxes levy. Dating in twenty thirty-two, the annual growth limitation would be two percent of assessed evaluation rather than two percent of taxes levy. So it's going to maintain the previous year's levy rate if valuation growth was below the threshold, but the levy rate would be reduced similar to the current structure if the threshold was exceeded. However, there would not be tiers of valuation growth and reduction like current. And it does say importantly, new valuation or construction would not be included in the limitations and calculations. So that would be a change that new construction or new valuation would be outside of that formula, which would be positive.
That's possible, yeah.
And then it does say cities would be similar, um. So, yeah, I guess that's a little more detail on that stuff, but yeah.
No, um, so I, I expect there to be changes in this, um, going forward. Um, they're working.
Is it in committee or is it in the?
Committee or, I don't know.
I don't know. I know it passed through the first.
First, national committee or?
It's probably through subcommittee, but it's still a committee. I, I don't know exact status, but that would be my guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyway, go on.
So, um, that's basically it. That's one thing I need to familiar myself with so I can contact some legislators to, to let them know how it's gonna affect us. It was a big conference, um, and other than that, that's all we have.
Much on the agenda next week?
Oh, let's see. Okay, so you guys will have conference board meeting at five o'clock on the twenty-fifth. Um, approving a Cassis County employee transfer from one department to another. And proposed tax levy public hearing at one o'clock P M. So, but that's it.
So we need to find, be in here in the afternoon.
Yes, 'cause for the tax hearing, it has to be a whole separate agenda, whole separate, uh, meetings.
Okay, good to know. Very good. All right, thank you, Tammy. Howard, any?
Absolutely.
Um, I had the, we had like a safety, uh, meeting after action report, which is not planned yesterday. I don't know how much we talked about that stuff, but anyway, we just talked about things that, um, due to what happened last week when, you know, somebody pushed, a toddler pushing the button by mistake and just, um, uh, kind of how some departments reacted and what their plan of action was, uh, versus what we expected to be. Uh, so we talked about a lot of different changes and stuff and had a really nice conversation, honestly. So, um, I expect some of those changes, you know, eventually will come forward to the board, but we did talk about, um, the one thing we talked about is making the, um, trying to differentiate between the tornadoes and higher, um, droughts.
And the, and the security one.
Yeah, so and, and adding more lights, um, so that departments have a sort of view of what's going on, um, not more sirens, but lights. Um, so that was the, the gist of it. A really good meeting, really good meeting, so.
It's for you. Tyler?
I don't think they had one, um, because I did not make it down to ISAC.
Okay.
But I did drop a email to you guys for review, um, so. Don't have anything specific to say on that, but just take a glance at that and if you have any questions, you know.
Just from the attorney's.
Yep, yep. I think that's all I got right now.
Okay, Josh?
I did not have any meetings.
And I did not either. Slow week for meetings. That's okay.
Real quick, Bucky, uh, back on another agenda item with the, um, the compensation for the. We, we've talked about, um, possibly looking at the, um, handbook for making those adjustments. Is that something that we should discuss soon and get the adjusted in the handbook or?
When are we gonna finish handbook discussions?
We're, we're working on it. We are working on it, so it's a pro, it's a ongoing project, so. So for which item are we talking about?
He's talking about the.
Yeah.
He's talking about the time and a half on Mother Days, when the courthouse is closed. That's what he's.
Yeah, but you guys didn't decide any.
We didn't. He's saying you'd like to have the discussion or.
Get out a discussion further about it? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, is that something that we, we want to, to be prior to the start of fiscal year, so we need to get that implemented?
How, how far are we at in the handbook? I mean, what, what's the plan?
They have sent it, the attorney has sent it back to us, and so we are going through it, you know, kind of to see if anything was missed or go through it, um, with them. And then, then once we finish with that, then we'll bring it to you guys to look at, um, to go through it, so, which I'm guessing is gonna take some time.
Could you send us the draft of what the attorney sent back, just so we can look at that and have a knowledge of where we're at?
Once we're done with it?
No, I mean, right now, just so that we can have a heads up of what's proposed or what's coming, and then when you guys have more recommendations, we can see the barriers in there.
Uh, Alex down. She has it.
Is there a board member on that or is it just a party?
It's just a couple of us that are doing it, that are going.
I don't think it's all of them.
No, and it, it's just, um, like everything that's on there that's been changed is like redacted. You can see any changes on.
Yeah. Yep, that's right. I just figured if we had a draft version, we could get a start on seeing what the changes.
Donna has the electronic copy, so.
I mean, my, my point is, is if we're gonna do anything for the compensation for those that worked during closures and stuff like that, it should be addressed on the, on the handbook. And I guess I'd like to see that happen more later, so it doesn't just.
Get pushed off, well, not only does it get pushed off until next year, and then we have the same situation that we did this year, where we have closure and then
they're going, okay, well, what do we do to compensate for that? We can get that rolling, get it into the handbook and then, uh, we can put that as an agenda item.
Well, I think you need to make the decision first before you put it in the handbook.
No, I know.
So that would probably be our portion when we get it back?
Is something that we could add in when we get that?
Yeah, and talk about the things, so.
I didn't know if we needed to have a separate agenda item just for that discussion point to put in the handbook or if we could do that as a whole.
Not if we do it as a whole, I think, and then approve the handbook writing and wordings.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say we, I'd say we discuss it one week, and if we have any certain changes, then those could be added, changed, clarified, whatever, and then get that brushed up, put together and approved in the next week. But, I mean, I don't think it needs to be separate for every single conversation within the handbook, 'cause that'd just be one conversation. There's probably gonna be other things that we'll see whether it was a change or whatever, we'll discuss probably a number of other topics at the end of the year, but as part of one, I, um.
All right, there we are at ten o'clock, so perfect timing there, and, yeah, we'll go forward with our discussion decision completion public hearing for DD sixty sub four improvement. Thanks all for being here, and Tyler, and.
Right.
And we need a motion to open the public hearing first, yep, yep. We have a motion by Stecker to open the public hearing.
I'll second.
And second by Garmin. Uh, any discussion on opening the public hearing? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay.
Roll call vote.
Excuse me, excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Uh, has? Garmin? Stecker? Wacker?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes. Motion as you name. All right, public hearing is open, and Tyler, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll take it away. Uh, good morning all. I'm Tyler Conley, professional engineer at Waldemank, uh, tasked with the oversight of this project. I wanna start by saying, uh, yes, this is the completion hearing for, uh, the project. I may have been a little, a, a week or two early on the amount that the contractor has left to do. There are items that I am aware, uh, are yet to be done and others that have been brought to our attention. And so with that, I wanna set, uh, the expectation that this completion hearing can be continued. I feel with the work they have left to do, it should be continued, and as long as the date and time for that continuance is set while the hearing is open, additional notice isn't required to be sent. However, there are still things I feel are important to discuss, as well as the objections that have come in, both for work yet to be done as well as the, uh, construction damages related to the project. Um, with every, with every day, with every week, we get closer to planting, wanted to get people in that had discussions with damages. Uh, now, rather than trying to, to get people back in, uh, closer we get to April. So, with that, we'll go through here, the documents that I have submitted for this. Uh, again, there is completion work yet to be done. There are at least two inspection ports that need to be removed yet. There is one, uh, joint connection that needs to be, uh, fortified before they can be, uh, considered complete. With that, for the inspection, I have also brought a log for the district's records of the ovality report. This was the, uh, review of the, uh, tile conditions and deflections for how it compared to the maximum allowance of deflection. There, uh, for the specifications that were utilized for this project, the maximum deflection was, that allowed would be five percent. Everything is in compliance with that and outlined in the, the testing tables here. The closest any segment got, and it was just the one twenty-foot stick, is, uh, deflected to four and a half percent. But all of that information is here and for the, the county's records, so turn that over. In the completion report as well, we've outlined the, the timeline, the contract, as well as the change orders. Bids were received October third of twenty twenty-three. The low and award was to Reitzel. That original contract amount was two million, three hundred forty-two thousand, two hundred forty-three dollars and zero cents. The total completed work to match all of the, uh, quanti- quantities used in the project was a total of two million, four hundred, one thousand, four hundred twenty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. All of which has been paid except the ten percent for retainage. That ten percent is the guarantee to complete the work. That does not get released until thirty days after the acceptance of the work, which would be done prior to the close of the completion hearing. Again, if we continue this, that ten percent is continued to be held until all work has been completed. Contractor is aware of that. I have been in contact with them this week about work and the, uh, that my recommendation was going to be the continuance of this hearing. As part of a drainage district project, landowners are entitled to damage from work that resulted on their land. As I have projected on the board here, there's a vast number of, of colors that outline the different, um, areas of effect, whether that be corn, soybeans, areas that, uh, were chopped for silage, areas that had, had drowned out as a result of rains. Um, as well as future damages. We allow for, or we recommend for the payment of not only the crops that were immediately lost as a result of this project, but also for a width over top of the tile, the direct result of the most, uh, compaction, the most, um, soil blending, the areas where losses into the future will be the heaviest. And that, uh, we have recommended one additional loss of crop, uh, essentially accounting for the, as that ground is worked out and begins to become productive again, uh, typically the, the split is seen as fifty percent the first year, thirty percent the next, twenty percent the year after that for the three-year run. So it's not only the crop immediately lost, but the areas of most heavily disturbance accounting for an additional year's crop losses. Um, and the, the thinner band that runs through the, the colors, the red band that runs through is what's representing that future damage tabulated per parcel on this tabulation. Additionally, I know of two damages, two additional claims for damages that have been filed. Just have the one. One submitted from. Do you have a name on this, March? I don't.
Phil Reynolds.
What's that?
That's Phil Reynolds.
Phil Reynolds submitted an additional amount based on, uh, damages and the, um, extra time for, for planting. He has itemized for the planting, additional harvesting hours, um, overplanting. A total additional request of one thousand, two hundred twenty-three dollars and zero cents. There was also a request to raise the price of soybeans from what the report had. As, let's see, well, okay, it wasn't a, it's not a, it's not a raise, it's a, appears to be a deduction in request, is that?
I think it was just an example of information he found, so.
Yeah, he submitted that, uh, soybeans were around twelve dollars, uh, six hundred twelve dollars and seventy-nine cents. Uh, whereas the damage report has them at seven hundred dollars. There was also submitted a, an objection to the completion of the work for damages in section thirty of the, the ground being rough. And there was also then on this, a request for, um, consideration of damages in the flooded areas, the drowned out areas, um, that the landowners are still, uh, to contend with. That's from a, uh, Richard Johnson, and is this, um, Walton Walters?
Bill Walsted.
No, Walsted, all right. So those are the two objections.
Wallace, Richard, um, what was his other name? He said there?
Richard Johnson.
Richard Johnson.
Richard Johnson. That one has a new packet, so I just wanted to make notes. That one isn't in my packet, so I just wanted to make notes.
Aside from that, and the, the obvious cleanup work that is yet to be done, um, the project went smoothly. Went well. I think the ovality report is, is proof of the product that the district received. Uh, it's all within compliance. It all fits to the specifications as they were outlined and, uh, was really done with, with pretty minimal event and, uh, and altercation out on site, so. With that.
They've still got some tiles rolling around out there.
They do?
Yeah.
They picked some of them up.
Well, that's. They picked some up this last kind of days. I never know.
They've been out there the last few days. Don't worry.
Is that not the difference between mud and dry dirt?
Uh, sometimes I question that.
You don't have to question it. Just go out to our place and look.
It's.
Can we make a request yet at this meeting for damages or not?
Yes, absolutely. As long as they're, as long as they're writing for the trustees to consider. Um, it is, it is ultimately the, the trustees' decision. Quote says they shall consider damages. I have submitted what we tallied up for surveyed acres, um, but I don't, I don't claim that that's all that landowners could have. And, uh, they must be in the form of, of writing. It's often best if items are explained or, or itemized best they can, um, with dollar amounts for, for consideration. And then that is for the trustees to, to decide. Uh, and as long as those are filed by the, by the, at or before the time that the hearing is, that they, they rule on those essentially.
At, at or before the end of the completion hearing.
Correct.
Uh, when, when Tyler already said earlier, his recommendation is that we continue this. We'll have, we'll still have the discussion here today so that anyone can air any thoughts, questions, grievances, whatever. But then if we continue the hearing, which I would second Tyler's recommendation, but if we continue the hearing, you could turn in something in writing today. Or if we continue it to two weeks out in advance, you would have up till the end of that continued hearing to turn in something in writing, so.
And it doesn't have to be at the hearing. You could turn those in, in between to, to the auditor's office.
Yep.
Um, just so long as it's done before the close of the hearing, they're all valid for consideration.
And, and since we are, well, since we're talking about continuing the hearing, that gives extra time. If we close the hearing today, the deadline would be today, just so that everyone's clear on the timeline. But as long as the hearing is active until it closes, you still can turn in objections or damages.
Could you close the hearing today? Would you got all that crap to level?
I, I'm not saying we would, and I'm not saying I'd recommend that. I'm just, uh, trying to elaborate the process of the code and the structure.
Who does like the damages when they wrecked our fences and stuff?
The, the, the district is, uh, for compensation of the fences. We pay them to, we pay the contractors to cut them and, and go through. We reimburse the landowners for the re-establishment of those, of those fences. So, if you have, uh, materials or receipts or anything for that, please do submit those for, those are eligible damages.
And who fixes them? We have to hire somebody to fix them.
If, if you were looking to hire someone, you would get in touch with a contractor or a business that would do that. They could get you either a proposal prior to the hearing, or if they already get the work accomplished, they could have a bill and that could be your.
So the county doesn't fix it for, for just.
We, we don't, and the contractor, the. Okay, the, I guess the reason that I've never recommended that we have our contractor do it is the same reason that I don't have, recommend that our contractor, uh, receive buffer, for instance, is that, uh, I would rather the district compensate the landowners to have it done the way they want it done, as opposed to having our contractor who's likely got little stake in the game, right? Throw something up that you don't like, then we have to do it again. We've paid good money badly, things like that. Um, same for why for like the reseeding of buffers. The, the district doesn't know what anyone has for a seed mix or a requirement for any sort of, uh, CRP contracts. Um, I equate it to, we wouldn't, landowners wouldn't want the contractor reseeding their corn. So they shouldn't be reseeding other things or, or rebuilding things that ultimately you have to be happy with.
Yeah, and, and obviously, I mean, you could take that to an extreme of you could have a barbed wire fence on steel T-posts and rebuild a white vinyl picket fence. That's, that's something that we would use discretion and review. Was it comparable? Was it just? Was it accurate? That's a decision you would make as trustees, but if you're replacing it with same kind, same type, within reason, then you would provide a, an estimate or a bill or whatever that would show those costs and we would evaluate that and.
And I see those considerations beyond on quotes, on final receipts, on, it, it's just, it, it's hard when something isn't itemized to, to justify what's going on. So the more information the trustees have for those considerations, oftentimes, but it is something that, that is very valid.
We're about stuff to clean up ourselves. How do we put a dollar value on that?
I've, I've seen, uh, some hourly rates by, by hours.
It'll just be estimations, because I'm not going out complaining about it right now, I guess.
Right, and that's, you know, there's, again, it, it's, as Kyle had stated, it's, it's things that are up for, for consideration and, and reasonable compensations for landowner inputs.
How close do they have to be returning it to the way it was before they started digging?
Uh, the, the expectation is, uh, a reasonable, workable condition. We're not tasking the contractor with returning it to a seed bed. We're expecting them to have it back to a, a status that the ground could be worked by the landowners. They're not, they're not normal, normal farming, but. Right, yes.
Well, what exactly is normal farming? You said work the ground. Well, we don't work the ground. We're pretty much no-till and vertical tillage, so we're not really working ground. We don't go out there with a plow anymore. Nobody does. We don't go out there with a chisel plow anymore. So if you've got ripples and rough spots, they're gonna be there ten years from now. You gotta dip a foot deep over here and a hump over here. It's not gonna get leveled except by us doing more tillage than we normally would. So I guess I'm concerned about that. I mean, back in the day, when you plowed it, sooner or later it'd get leveled, but when you no-till, sooner or later it don't get leveled or it takes a long, long time. So, I'm just curious what your plan, what, how far they've gotta take this or how much they're going to do with it, how much of it just gets out of our pocket to do extra work beyond what we would normally have done anyway. And we have a really big problem with all them damn rocks out there that they left everywhere. Hundreds, thousands, millions of blue rocks scattered everywhere that were not there before.
There is, yeah, I'd speak to that. There is, it's the nature of the, the work that was done, the product that was used.
They could have prowled them up behind them and kept working them in and putting them in with the bedding, not just left them. You wanna see a picture of them? He's got pictures of what they got out there. It's not true.
I'll see your photos. I've, I've seen it firsthand. There is, there is a blanket of.
In my opinion, I ran one of them bastards into my combine by my fault. Call bam, and you're just hoping that it didn't wreck anything. I still haven't looked, because I don't know what I did wrong. But, but just rocks everywhere. I picked up rocks and this is not an exaggeration. For sixty years on that farm and then somebody else comes up and spreads them out for me. Like, God, can't you even pick up the damn rocks and bury them as you're going along? Apparently they can't.
Is there a reason why we had to go to such a large-sized rock towards the end of this project? Because it was pretty small stuff when we started.
Yeah, that won't be a problem.
Three inches across now, all over.
Oh, there, inch and a half, that's the maximum that goes through the screen that they allow you to use. But I'm sure that some of them must be long away, but.
And there was, there's a, there's two different types of rock in respect on the project. There's the, the bedding rock that was used to encase the, the entirety of the, of the pipe. That's the smaller, more of the, the gravel. There was also foundation stone that in instances below the pipe where that was needed, that's the larger, that's up to the two-inch.
They used all foundation stone then on the last mile of that or two.
And that would have been in some of the wetter locations. They've been informed about additional rock cleanup. I understand it's not.
Yeah, they went out for mud yesterday. I mean, it's a whole of a mess. I mean.
Yeah.
Stay away.
Take a skid loader out there in March to try and scrape the rocks together and.
There were being zero crop grown there after what they've done to it the last three days. It will not grow, period.
What do you do? You wanted the tile, you got the tile.
I want it done in a manner that makes sense to the ground.
Sorry, that's my opinion and we deal with rocks all day long and play county and park on mine. That's, that's us.
They weren't there before. They are there now. And they are a potential problem. And they could have been cleaned up as they went along. They just put a guy in the skid loader and kept prowling them up as they went along, picking them up and working them together. It wasn't rocket science. I've run skid loaders my whole life and it could have been done. And if they had told me, which they have never communicated with me about anything, except we're gonna drive over some beans to get to that spot. But the only call I ever got from them, other than the other day, yesterday, when they called up and said, can we leave that one riser because it's in a mud hole? And I said, no, take it out. If they had communicated with me about this, I would have went out there and cleaned them up if they were, if that was necessary. But nobody communicated with me at all about anything. I just figured, they know what they're doing. We asked them, are you gonna clean those rocks up? Yeah, we're gonna bury them when we crush the tile. Fine, they're still there. Don't know. I don't like it.
But then there's a lot of things in this world we don't like.
Is this between us and you?
It's between us and you.
But your dad wanted this tile.
We didn't want it, but we did the.
I don't care. We got it.
We got the, we got the mess.
You got the bill.
Yeah.
Let's, let's one person talk for the thing, but we gotta, we gotta keep this conversation respectful.
That's what I agree with. We gotta keep this conversation on track here.
I'm just being honest.
I get that, but that.
What's wrong with honesty in this world?
If it correlates with being stated in a professional and respectful manner than this one.
We are. We didn't want this.
I knew we were gonna show up and here they are digging in my land. How did I know?
We didn't, yeah. We didn't get any warning either.
He's, I asked him. I said, do you know they're down there digging? No, they just showed up. Were we supposed to get some sort of?
Notice.
I kinda felt that was, that was.
That's exactly what I just said, that the contractor was not very good.
So I agree with him.
In point of what was going on. That was something he could have done much better, but he wasn't informed of what he could do. I would, if I, if I was gonna make a recommendation, I would tell the contractor that when you get these contracts, set up the time where you can have a meeting where you will be there, the contractor will be there and invite the landowners and their tenants to come to the meeting at his office or whatever and explain what's going on. How it's gonna work.
That's a valid point and we can definitely.
I think that's, that's important. And I got one other thing here while I'm on the roll. And I know you guys fulfilled the letter of the law. But we got three letters so far, but the one that was really important was printed in the paper that the bids will be opened and the contracts led on, what was it, October tenth? Find, it's in the legal notices. So you fulfilled the letter of the law and I agree with that. But I was waiting to get a letter in the mail that said, whatever day we're gonna open these contracts, like we got a letter for today, like we got a letter when the first time. This is the third letter we've gotten, but we didn't get the one that was really most important, which was in the paper, which said, it will be a contract bid process. Get the information from both of them, maybe bids will be open on such and such a day. The contracts will be led on, what was it, tenth of October, I think. I didn't know about it because, well, half the people don't get the Kedoo County paper and have to do us, me. I don't read all those legal notices. So I didn't know what day the bids were even gonna be open. I ended up talking to another guy that does drainage work in November and he said, well, that's all been decided. I didn't know about it. So in the future, if you're gonna do a project this big, and I know you fulfill the letter of the law, I would recommend that you still spend the three or four hundred dollars or whatever it takes to write letters to all the landowners and say, this is the day the contracts are gonna be open.
Yeah, and, and, and I guess I'd apologize if you didn't receive that, but we did send postcards out for informing about the bid letting. I think Billy even called me about it, asking what it was when you received it.
I never got anything.
We didn't get anything.
I, I mean, that's a long time ago, but I.
I never got that. I get my mail.
Do we have copies of what we sent out? That, if you could get a copy so we could show people what we sent out.
You know, you guys have these meetings. How many people are here out of all these people that it affects? Where are they?
They don't care.
Some people, some people.
They just pay it.
I gotta say.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, so.
I mean, we have, we have other districts, like, I, I could use one, for example, that's forty, forty-plus thousand acres and you might have ten or twenty people that show up. And that's, that's an individual landowner choice and responsibility to show up if you have a question, objection, whatever. Some people are supportive and they just don't come if they don't feel they need to. But that's, it's, it's no different with any.
With clear land.
It, it's no different with any other project is what I'm trying to say. I mean, it, it depends on the situation. There, there may be a, a district similar size like this and we may have. We may have every single chair in this room filled because they, they have something that they're concerned about or passionate about. But it's all up to the landowners to show up.
Yeah, you know, I started out starting to talk.
Go ahead, though.
What I'm wondering is, going back to the damages.
Yep.
I mean, it ain't my fault that we got all this rain. Why should I not have damage? I mean, I've planted that thing twice. So, I mean, is, is it really fair that, that the rest of us don't get damages on that pile?
You mean, you mean the area where it drowned it out?
Correct. I mean, because it drowned it out, I'm not gonna get paid. I mean, what's Mr. Johnson's plan, but.
Yep.
So I don't feel that's fair.
So when Tyler submitted his report, and we didn't talk about it in depth at that point, but I anticipated that conversation would be had today. Uh, he did, they did classify it in all those different statuses, so to speak. And I guess I would agree with you, the area that was damaged and used for this project should still be compensated the same as if it had drowned it out or not. I fully agree with that. And we can make those changes discretionarily as trustees. But I appreciate that he separated it out, so we had more information rather than less. And obviously, that was his recommendation. But, uh, I do agree with you, it's, it's not your fault that it drowned it out, uh, and your land was still affected because the project went through. So I, I think the zero-dollar figures for the areas that are drowned out should be, uh, changed and addressed as whether they were drowned out or not in the same fashion.
One more comment.
Thank you. One more comment I got is, one, you guys, all the risers that are out there, what, what are you doing to the riser? You take them down three feet, cut them off, put. What, what are you doing to the riser, taking them down three feet, cut them off with a cap on?
Absolutely.
That was one thing we're wondering what's going on.
That is, that is precisely what's happened. Uh, those risers were used as the, uh, access locations for the televising and the ovali reports. So the verification that it is the size and is holding its, its shape. Um, we have GPS shots on all of those, but we, we know people don't want, they're in the way, don't want armed around them. What have you, so those have all been taken down at least three feet, cut and capped. They're, they're there to be used if we need to get back to them in the, in the future. Like I said, we have, we have locations of every single one of them. Uh, all of that should be updated on the, on the county's, uh, actual GIS systems, so, yeah.
Okay, that's right, just wondering what they were doing, cause they made it go out there.
And, and hypothetically, if they landed in a location where you were able to tie into them tiling, um, like. Say the actual main tile is eight or ten feet deep and you wanna run your private tile at three or four feet. You could tie into the side of that and have easier access to the main tile because they're there. If, if there was a situation that made that work feasibly.
If we have the problem that tiles got missed, that they get hooked up. Will, I mean, we turn it into the.
Yep, we'll still take it.
Into Marge or whatever and.
Yep.
Yep. The, the contractor on those instances are still, uh, eligible for the cost that they would have for the connections. But for like additional mobilization and things like that, they're, it's my opinion, they're not, because they should have gotten them the first time. But any of that information, yep, to the, to the auditor's office and, uh, that gets, that gets addressed, that, as part of this.
Is there, do we each get a map of where our private tiles were hooked in?
We have, and I, I'll get those up to the auditor's office, we do have ASBIL plans, I don't have those with me right now. But we, we have a record of where everyone that was encountered, uh, is and how it, where it comes into the, to the main. So those exist, I don't have them with me right now, either.
I know, it'd probably be better if they came to your office to get some of that for their own information.
Yeah. Absolutely, yeah.
Let me say that again, I didn't hear you.
If you just stop up to our office, we can get you, anyone that wants a set of the ASBIL plans. They will belong to the district, it's all, it's all your information, so we'll happily pick you up the set of those.
Probably only, you, you only care about the ones on your land, right?
Yeah.
You don't need to pull.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, we, we just, what's applicable.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why I think it'd be easier, cause you could just print off stuff for their party.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Yep.
How soon do they make a decision on the damage claims, or how is that handled after the claim is admitted?
That, that is, that's what we're here, that's what we're here to discuss. That would be before this hearing is closed, they make the determination on those, on those damages. We can discuss, as we already have, Kyle's made his thoughts on the drowned out areas pretty clear. Um, there is the one, uh, additional claim for additional times, uh, delays based on the project. Um. Any, anything that wants to be submitted in, in writing can be discussed and.
But if you don't know what the damages are gonna be, if they haven't finished leveling, if you don't know what it'll look like when they're done, or how wet they're gonna go or anything.
Then, uh.
But they still have your completion hearing and he goes in afterwards and.
Well, and we're, we're not gonna complete, it's not my recommendation, I, I.
I know that, but it, it could be. Who knows when he's gonna get there to finish that, if there's more leveling to do, is that what you're saying?
On these complaints for the, for the mounding, uh, or the, the rutting, yes, the, the damages that they caused. The other day trying to work when it was too wet, that's something they're gonna have to go back and rectify.
We don't know if we can even plant a crop there this year.
Well, and, and some of those should be tracked specifically on what caused them. Because we have withheld money from the contractor for damages that they have caused in other projects, so. Uh, as much detail as possible and some of that would be helpful, but I guess in.
We have, I don't know if this is good enough, the information he has right now, but we did put some down for what we claimed.
I would like to, I guess, request continuing to this, so I can put together a more detailed proposal. And what I have is chicken scratches right now compared to what it should be, so.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I would think as far as continuing, I mean, we don't legally have to send notice if, um. The date and time is scheduled at this hearing, but with the aspects of this project, I guess I would recommend that we. Continue it and not set a date, so that once the actual work is done, we could set a date and come back here and evaluate it. Which then also gives you guys time to put together more accurate estimates or proposals or whatever. Or contact a fence company to make repairs or whatever that situation may be. I think we need to give ample time to get this done correctly.
Appreciate that, yeah.
Yeah, rocks, I mean, all, all of that stuff is encompassed in what I said, but I think we, we need to let the contractor finish what. They're planning to do and then give you guys as landowners time to respond or have further. Even if, even if it's another call to Tyler and say, hey, are they done out here? And he says, yeah, they say they're done, and you say, well, I want this one thing addressed, maybe they can address it and solve your concern. Or it gives you the time to say, if they don't address it, then this is what I would like for damages. And then we can have that conversation again. You had your hand up?
Yeah, what are we gonna know about what our approximate cost is gonna be each individual? And, and secondly, um. I guess I'm hoping that this is gonna be on our, uh, tax assessment this year yet, so.
Yep.
That, that is the, that is the plan. Uh, we're, we're on schedule for that, what the, uh, report for the reclassification, the distribution of benefits that was filed.
April.
April, yeah, that's right, so April twenty ninth, we are planning to have a reclassification hearing. And that reclassification has a breakdown of what your cost would be, so you could see what your own property is expected to pay.
So what, so around the twenty ninth?
Well, the, the notices have been delivered to the county, those have to go out at least twenty days before the hearing.
The, but the, but the report has already been filed, so if you wanted to get that yet today before you leave, you could pick that up from the auditor's office. We can get you copies of that. Obviously, it's not final, but if you get it today, uh, it's a, it's a pretty.
It's a condemnation.
It's a pretty close number to what it should be, yep, it, I mean.
We, we've, we've rounded the number off just to make, to, to math a little easier on everything. But it, it includes a bit of a cushion for damages and, and different things that way. It should be, it should be more than a ballpark estimate on whatever parcel.
But one thing you'll wanna keep in mind is that reclassification report has multiple schedules, so it's got a schedule for the main tile and it's also got schedules for laterals. And it does say at the top of those pages or those schedules, uh, this is a, this would be to levy this fall. Or this would not be a levy, it's just an example. So it's, if you add up all the numbers in that report, it's not gonna be correct to what you pay, because some are examples and some are actual levies.
It's just the first schedule for the main.
Yep, so just, just be cognizant of what information you're looking at. And you can call me or Tyler and we can help walk you through that stuff too.
Yeah, I'll probably do some explaining down there.
Yep.
It's just, Kyle brings it up because in, if you get those and, and, yeah, you just look at them and you add up every number, like Kyle said. It's gonna be way more than what your actual payment is, because.
Especially if you have a small lateral in your property where you would pay all of it, like there's some that are hundred thousand dollar examples. Well, we didn't actually do any work there, so you're not gonna have a hundred thousand dollar bill. It's just if something happens in the future, this is an example of how those costs would be distributed.
Right, so it's, it, a little bit of explanation on how those work is, is good, so that you're not, you know, having like hard complications about it. Once, all of them.
Just go to the law, see what the bill is.
Once again.
No, the, the reclassifications get, uh.
Well, after the twenty ninth, we'll, we'll know.
You can, you can get that today and Tyler could even walk you through it to show you what your property is gonna be or likely going to be. And it, it should be within a couple percent in all reality of what's on there, so it should be very close. Uh, who's probably got it right there.
I was, I've got one of them right here and I was just gonna say, just as an example, so this is the total report. Um. That's how much of it is relevant to this project, the rest of it is for the rest of the laterals. So this is what you'd be interested in looking at, everything else is, is not to be assessed, not intended. It's just on how all the other laterals would be paid for. So if more than half of it isn't relevant to, to adding up and, and going through, it's just this first section pertinent to the, to the main tile. So that you could know, um, like Kyle said, even just once we're done here.
Yep, good question.
So with that, I guess it sounds like, and I've got a pretty good rundown of, of what is left to do. I would request that any additional contact information that I may not have, if I could get. So that we, we make sure we get through the finish line the way everybody expects. Um, I'd appreciate that.
Yep.
But, but other than that.
Or, or if you have any concerns, at least directly bring them to Tyler and stuff too, yep.
Other than that, yes, my recommendation certainly regarding the closeout of the project is to, and I, I like the way that Kyle has framed it. Uh, continue it without setting a date and time, making the requirement that notice be, be reset.
What's your phone number, Tyler?
Um, let's see, I was just gonna hand out cards.
That's fine, if you wanna do that, I don't care.
For, uh, for those that just wanna take it down, it's, uh, not that I'm dodging the question, but it's seven one two, three six three, two three five nine. Yep, there you go.
I can get it.
One there, there you go.
Is there any other questions, concerns, comments, anything that you guys would like to bring up today before we, um, act on continuing the hearing?
Was there a reason why they went out there in the hood just to get that done before this hearing or what?
I.
Pretty bad.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna. They were, they were trying to get things done, um, I've been on them about getting things done, make a, make a, try it something, bad decision. I, it, it.
They would have gotten a lot less damage claims for us, from us if they would have got it done last fall, I know that. But it would have sure been nice to have it done before it rose up, so we could have done something with that. But it's, I've been debating even whether to try and plant that stuff this spring or just let it go and. Plant a cover crop or something later in the summer after it's got a chance to loosen the soil up that we're. I don't know how you can go in there and put in hydrants or anything else on them, it's just.
It's concrete, you know.
It's gonna be like cement, it's gonna be. We will make a claim on it, you guys will have to decide if you wanna honor it or not, I guess, so.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Well, we'll know more, we'll know more in about, what, six, eight weeks, we'll know a lot more, I know that, so.
That's very, very fair.
Yeah, right.
Alright, thanks.
Oh, I guess, the, the one last thing that I, I didn't say, just tripped in my mind, is that there is, after the, the acceptance, the completion of all of this. There is a one year maintenance period for, uh, the contractor could be made to return. Uh, for repairs that are deemed to have been based on their, uh, performance or workmanship. So that is still, uh, on all of these projects, a valid thing and, uh, that continues as well. But again, that doesn't start until the project is formally accepted.
And, and we have a, I mean, it doesn't necessarily, or it's probably not a huge piece of it, but we have a ten percent retainage, which has been helped from the contractor. So, um, that would be released thirty days after the completion hearing and the close of the completion hearing, when the completion was accepted. So by, um, not doing that today, that keeps us with leverage on the contractor to get these things finished up.
So they start charging interest on this on December first or what?
On, on what?
Anybody know when they start charging interest on this, cause this bill is gonna be three to five hundred thousand for me, I'm pretty sure.
Are you talking on the project as a whole or the retainage?
The project as a whole, yeah, when do they start charging interest to the landowner?
So. When the structure of when payments go out, the contractor makes, uh, or can make up to monthly payment requests. So we've had a couple different pay apps that we have approved and paid. Once those are approved by the board, they start accruing interest if there's not funds already in the district's account. So from, and we handle drainage claims the first Tuesday of each month. So when those bills were paid as the project went along, that's when the interest started. But when, yep, on that part of the bill, whatever was paid, or even engineering, um, when they submit bills, that interest starts when we approve the bill. Uh, but then when we set the assessments and Tyler's already done calculations to this degree. Uh, or estimates for the reclassification stuff, but when we send out the assessments that should encompass. All of the project costs, including interest, including engineering, including the work of the contractor, including damages, including cost of publication. All of the project bills should be wrapped together and then we send out an assessment and then that divvies out. Based on your percentage of the, of the reclass, so to speak, or your benefit that you have. So, um, by having the reclass schedule and all that stuff in a timely manner, we can set those assessments. So that you would pay that bill this fall, or you would have the option to do waivers, because we already made that decision. But then if you sign up for waivers, you would pay, if, if you specifically signed up for waivers, you would have. Your payments spread out over that period of time and you would pay the interest on what you waived. But everyone else in the district can handle their own decisions independently of yours as a landowner. So one person could pay it all right away, the next person could waive it, and it should all work out in the end.
Anybody have any idea what the interest rate is on the waiver?
Uh, six percent. So if you, I mean, the.
Five, is it five on the other one, the last time we talked in?
Are we, five for this, five for this.
I was gonna say, I thought it was at five.
Okay, yep, so five for this project, if you can borrow at a bank cheaper, say you can borrow three percent, then you could do that.
True.
Or vice versa, if it's seven percent at a bank, you're gonna be better off to finance it through the warrants. Uh, but that's your options on the table, yep.
Otherwise, is it twenty year waiver or is there?
Yeah, I think we set twenty years.
Yeah, for a project of this size, it would.
Yep.
I, I'm not gonna talk about.
Is it possible?
Four, five hundred dollars.
Pay part of it and waive the rest?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
No penalty for early payment?
No.
What, you just asked?
That it's possible to pay part of it and then waive the rest of it?
Yeah, and, and you can, like Kyle was saying, you can, there is no penalties for early payments. So if you can get the financing better elsewhere, which likely can, you can pay all to the county at one time and then have it financed elsewhere. You're not penalized for, for that payment, so. That's all just independent financing that, or financial decisions that landowners make.
Or, or if you start it by waiving everything, then X number of years from now, interest rates go down and you want to. Finance through a bank at a cheaper rate to pay off the, the drainage district, that would be an option as well. So, I mean, yeah, there's no early payment charge or anything like that, but just trying to walk through the options that you guys have, so. But, any other questions? Otherwise, if not, I guess I would make the motion that we continue this hearing. Otherwise, if not, I guess I would make the motion that we continue this hearing without setting a date and now we can't vote because we're not, because we're not-
The motion remain open till-
Yep, so then to continue it without setting a date, that way we send notices when we do have the work completed or fully completed by the contractor.
We gotta get a second and then vote, technically. So we have a motion, yep, a second by Haas, yep. Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue the hearing, uh, with the date not set, the project fully complete. Uh, any further discussion on the motion? Not all in favor, please, or all, two roll call vote.
Haas? Garmin? Staker?
Yes.
Walter?
Yes.
Nah?
Yes.
Alright, yep, thank you all, thank you all for coming in and voicing your thoughts and opinions and all that.
Thank you all. Have a good day. Okay.
That's the last thing we have. Make the motion to adjourn.
Second, cause I haven't gotten a motion yet.
We'll rectify that definitely. We skipped over you.
Motion and a second adjourn.
We skipped over you for committee reports.
No, I, I mean-
No, he didn't have anything.
Okay. No, no, we're done, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, and the opposed, aye, motion is unanimous.
No, he didn't feel skipped.
Thank you all.